To order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for coming, everybody. Good Labor Day weekend. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Barry.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Odie Brayson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine. Here.
Okay, we are all here. Bill's payable, I will entertain a motion.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve Bill's payable in the amount of $9,725.66.
We have support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we got my supervisor's report. Oh, bear with me, it's a long one. I've been working on a lot of building issues and dangerous building. Forward the board an email where Judge West held up a decision that our ZBA made. Had a pre-application meeting with Eagle, August 22nd, with our engineers, our planners, and review the site plan with Eagle for the wastewater treatment plant in Harson's Island. Meeting was very positive. They basically said, "We can use the site to build our wastewater treatment plant." And we need to get two permits from Eagle, a site permit with wetland delineation, and a discharge permit. We do have to mitigate .81 acres of the wetlands for the site permit, which we have been working on with them. Doing probably, last week, we were doing a couple emails back and forth every day. And we either have to get 1.62 acres of upland for the mitigation, or 10 acres with, we can do a habitat restoration with. I'm getting quotes and engineering for both of those. Before we can get real granular on the design of the plant, we do have to get our discharge permit because that will say what levels of mercury, potassium, all the discharge levels that they are looking for. So before we get that, I mean, we have to get that permit before we can get real granular on the engineering of the plant itself. But I'm getting quotes for it to do the engineering for both, obtaining both permits. Had a meeting with the architects for our public safety building, working out concepts and ultimately a price estimate so we can get started on securing those funds. I mentioned before, we've had discussions with Senator Peters' office, and actually the county helping out, and very positive feedback. See, been working on this past couple weeks, a new contract with IRA that's on today, upgrading our water ordinance and water line extension on Columbine on Harson's Island. Met with State Senator Hertel Friday, and went over a bunch of Clay issues and concerns. It went very well. I also met with a group of promoters that would like to bring hydroplane racing back to Clay Township. Both meetings went very positive, and we'll be talking to both of them going forward. We start our new office hours today, our business office hours today. We're open from 7:30 in the morning to 5:30. And actually, between 7:30 and 8:00 this morning, we got three people in. So, that seems, on day one, that worked out. I've been planning the work for the Algonquin Outdoor Classroom and Nature Trail. The asphalt trail is getting repaired and has a new entrance sign being worked on right now. And I did have the frags around the pond treated. This is all being paid for by donations and service clubs. So several of the quilt blocks are installed around Clay Township. We have the Colony Tower, St. John's Marsh, our park next door, Harson's Island Ferry, and the Pearl Beach bathrooms. And the Pearl Beach bathrooms have been painted and are almost done. The parking lot, we still have to have the asphalt company come back. We got a little dip that they're gonna have to pull out and resurface. So I'm not sure yet when that's going to be placed. I've been asked to actually serve on the St. Clair County Economic Development Authority on their Board of Directors. So that's not official yet. Cleanup weekend was pretty, was successful last week. We were busy. I'm not sure how much containers we filled up, and I think we got about 175 tires. And it was very successful. We did have one problem. We got a call from Eagle, they don't want us to burn our old docks and decks. They'd rather us take them to the landfill, which will, would increase our cost big time. They have probably equate another 10, 12 containers that we'd have to do that. So I don't know what we're gonna do about that yet. We still do, we have the farmer's market in the park still every Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00. Our last music in the park actually was canceled. And the Journey cover band, From Here to Infinity, will play Saturday, October 21st at 6:00 PM in our park. Woodside Church sponsor, a back-to-school backpack giveaway. Pearl Beach Lions were doing eye screening at this event. Our Clay Township Fire Department was handing out swag. Our Clay Township Fire, or Police Department, gave out about 150 kid ID kits where they could get fingerprinted and everything. We gave away around 300 backpacks filled with school supplies. And I always like to say, these backpacks carry more than school supplies, they carry dreams and future opportunities. We have a Detroit Lions bus trip, September 17th. Leaves at 11:00 AM from our park. It's the Lions versus Seahawks, $175 per person. And I'm not sure if it's sold out or not yet. And I wanna give kudos to Harson's Island Lions. From what I saw, it was a successful turkey shoot. I know I had lots of fun. And things going on there. It was full everywhere. I did wanna make this address, I don't do this that often, but I wanted to respond to, I believe it's an anonymous post. It's headline, or calling, "Fleecing the Clay Township Taxpayers." And it does state somewhere in the post that their numbers may be off. And yeah, they are off. And I wanna go, this post makes a big thing about how we split the treasurers, the clerks, and my salary, split it up in half. And we've gone over this before, but the only reason we split the salary in two different line items is to hold the elected officers more accountable to the board. State law, you cannot lower a salary of an elected official from the beginning of their term. It's against the law for the board to lower our salary. When we had bad apple on the township board, it was proven in beslinging over $171,000. Township still had to pay her full salary for over a year of $57,000. I was here then. Splitting up the salary, the board can reduce our salary, our non-statutory duty salary, if we are not doing the job to the board's satisfaction. When we did this, MTA and the Port Huron Times-Herald applauded the decision. In this post, my salary went, it states my salary went up to $83,838. My actual salary is $78,594. This post states that the stipend for the non-statutory duties is $41,100. But actually, or I'm sorry, it states that my statutory duty pay is $44,100, but it's actually $42,000. The post states that my stipend for the actual non-statutory duties is $39,738. Actually, it's $36,594. This is all posted on our website and is audited every year. It's out there, you can all see it, add the two numbers together. Townshipwide, our pay increases were, in the year of '16, including ours, 3%. Year '17, it was 1.75%. Year '18, it was 5%. Year '19, it was by 3%. Year '20, it was 3%. Year '21, it was 3%. Year '22, it was 3%. And this past year, it was 5%. This post said our personal pay increase, and I quote, "Almost doubles every year." Comparable, and they did a lot of comparing what we make compared to other offices. I myself, I make less than the Elginex City Manager and Marine City Manager did on their last year's number. I don't know what they're getting paid this year, but right now, I'm making less than they did in last year's. I make less than all the management in the schools. We manage a $15 million budget with over 100 employees. What would a CEO or top management make at a private company making a similar-sized company today, a private company today? The post states that we could save $2.5 to $2.8 million a year by going contracting with the sheriff. This is definitely not true. The township collects $2.8 million in taxes for our police. Do you think the sheriff's gonna come here for free? At this time, I talked to Matt King, the sheriff will not even provide a quote for giving service to Clay Township for the police service. They won't even give us a quote. So contracting with the sheriff, it's not an option for Clay. It's just not there. $2.8 million is a lot of money, but the lack of a strong police force will cost us more. And I personally am not in favor of defunding our police. The first thing to go, in all reality, the first thing to go would be our resource officer in the school. And we will not leave our most precious asset, our children, with no protection. If you wanna cut the resource officer, go for it. The post states how we are not fiscally responsible and slamming us for about, for our additional duties. Clay Township collects just over a half a mil in taxes for the township general operations. It's by far the lowest in the county. The amount that we collect for, to cover our general expenses is $304,000 a year. This covers our roads, our ditching, our building, our assessing, our treasurer, our clerk's office, elections, FOIAs, our legal bills, maintaining bike trails, taking care of the buildings and grounds, our streetlights, helping out with our libraries and museums, and much, much more. How can we do this so cheaply? It's by the great job, the job, the great job that our department heads do in our additional non-statutory duties. Since I've been in office, Clay Township has received nearly $20 million in grants and awards to assist, and I've assisted with the county to receive another $1.5 million grant for a beach park. These grants pay for water, sewer infrastructure, roads, bridges, habitat restoration, parks, and much more. The supervisor also is project manager in charge of department heads, roads, parks, and garage, or garbage, and much, much more. All non-statutory duties. The clerk also does our HR, and she does a lot of other things that are considered non-statutory in that, but I just do HR. Chesterfield, for their HR person, pays $122,000 for their HR person. Our treasurer does all our reconciliations of cash and checking, non-statutory. After, we did have a treasurer resign, we had to outsource this, and it cost the township much, much more. A neighboring community pays an outside company to do their cash reconciliation and their general ledger $12,000 a month. Clay used to pay over $100,000 a year in our audit, it was very well documented. This year, we're paying $36,500. Why is it so cheap? It's because the job, the non-statutory duties that is being done. None of these savings would be possible without our, without our non-statutory duties being done. And if someone decides not to do these duties, if I decide I'm not gonna deal with it, the board has authority to cut our salary by 30, by over $36,000. So we are held more accountable to this. Our water, our police, our fire department save our taxpayers' money all the time by doing things in-house as opposed to outsourcing, like most of the other municipalities do. And if anybody would like to schedule a time to come in and meet with me, the treasurer, the clerk, and the department heads to go over any of these numbers, you are more than welcome to. Just make an appointment, and we'll sit down and go over everything. So I just wanna make that clear, that, like I say, there's a lot of misinformation, so. Okay, other than that, any public comments?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Artie, I wanna start first all by saying I appreciate that your comments and such, because quite frankly, a lot of what I was bringing to the board today was directly related to some of these issues.
I apologize, can I get your name?
I'm sorry, Cindy Pallato.
Thank you.
Cottage Lane, Harson's Island. If you don't mind, let me grab my glasses. So, and you know, I do, I do appreciate the board, and I know that you guys do work hard. And I also recognize that it can be a pretty thankless job in a lot of cases. But there are questions that come about with respect to expenditures that are being approved by this board, however so small and so slight. And I'm going back to a previous meeting where it was brought up that, you know, a medical bill was paid, or a suit was purchased. And these are questionable purchases because as taxpayers, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is, why are we purchasing a suit for an employee? Now granted, if this was an employee that was, we were purchasing a uniform for, absolutely, I recognize that. But not only are we, why are we purchasing a suit, why are we spending $500 for a suit? My God, my husband doesn't even have a $500 suit. So, you know, it's the little things that, and it's the little noises that, and chatter that starts to get bigger and noisier throughout the township. And it's that chatter that creates a lot of distrust and possibly questions as to how our money, taxpayers' money, is being spent. That brings us to today, where I understand that there is a vote, supposedly a vote that is out there with respect to unused vacation time. Myself, having a company for many years, if there was a contract in place that stated that you use it or lose it, that was pretty much the way things held. If there is a budget in place that pays an individual for 52 weeks of work, and that individual chooses to work for 52 weeks and not take their vacation time, would their vacation time then, if you're paying it back, if you're paying it out to them, that would then, I would assume, put you over budget with respect to your, the payroll budget? Because you're, so now, where do we make up that money? And again, however small, it may be just one individual, but it is an individual, and it is money, that is coming out of the taxpayers, the taxpayers' coffers. So I understand that this is a public comment, and unfortunately, you are not required to respond in this forum, or frankly, in any other forum. However, I'm sure that I'm not the only taxpaying constituent that has concerns about the budgetary expenditures. So the very, very best that we can do is stand before you in this forum with our concerns, with our questions, and then take our concerns and our questions back to our neighbors and our friends, and, you know, hopefully, they bring their questions. And at the end of the day, we hope that it just creates more transparency. We hope that it gives you the reason to publicly explain things to us, as you did this evening with regards to the, you know, these extra duties, or the additional duties, that line item, that's a very ambiguous line item. It's very vague. What does that mean? You know, how do you, how do you identify what an extra duty is, or additional duty is? How do you calculate how that duty is paid? Where is it documented? So these are, these are things that allow for a lot of questions in the, your constituents' minds. So if you're more transparent as to what that dollar amount is, we're not denying you what you should be paid. We don't expect you to do this for free, but I think that it just needs to be a little clearer as to where the money is being spent. Thank you.
Like I said, Cindy, if you wanna come in and make an appointment. We can go over all those expenses and how it works with the non-statutory, we all have contracts.
And it's not just me, though. I think I speak for a lot of, a lot of people in the town.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
Hi, everybody. My name is Steve Kraft, Geno, moving Geno. I wrote that, Artie, so I'll tell you where the numbers came from off your budget. Sorry, but I mean, it came off your budget and off the contract. The numbers may be a little different, I mentioned that in there, and the reason they're a little different is because three different documents, there's three different numbers. So you said that, among other things that you said, was their non-statutory duties. But you assigned yourself, your board, assigned yourself those non-statutory duties, we didn't. And so then you avoid, then you assigned yourself a pay for those non-statutory duties, we didn't.
The board assigns it to us.
I know, but you guys, you people that are receiving it are three votes, and you only need four to get it. So, and when you voted on them, I look back and look, when you voted on them, you voted on your own race. You shouldn't have done that. Each one of you did that. You can't, you should have sustained from the vote on your own race, at least.
And would it have passed?
This is my time, please.
Would it have passed?
This, the non-statutory duties is just, okay, I mean, if they want to do them, ask us. You know, we're paying a bill, ask us if you want, if we want those duties done, or how we want them paid. I'm not, I'm not too concerned about a couple thousand dollars here, the numbers are off on the budgets. The deal is, it's an 80% add-on to your base pay. Do the math, your base pay is so much, forty-some thousand dollars, you're giving yourself $36,000 stipend, additional duties, that's 80% of your base pay add-on, no matter how you calculate it. I'm just asking, since it's all in question, and I'm sure a lot of people are upset about it, I'm sure you got upset about it when you read it. So that's why so many people are here, they got upset about it when they read it. So I'm asking, just go back and rescind that resolution that gave yourself that money until we get a chance to say if we want you to do that or not. That's all I'm asking. So the numbers are pretty darn close, so. The suits, let me ask about the suit. It's not $564 for a suit. It's $264 for a suit. It's $335 was the add-on for a switchblade knife engraved. All right? The contract, the employee's contract that got that says that he gets a uniform allowance. On the contract, it stipulates all the things that are uniform. A switchblade knife and a clothing, a suit, clothing, a civilian clothes is not one of those items. But you approved both of them. Okay? So, and that's what it is. I mean, we had to FLY it to get that information, but that's what it is. Unused leave time, I hope you don't do that. That's just another add-on. I mean, nobody gets that. The federal government, I worked for the federal government, they banned that in 1980. The state government, I worked for them, they banned it in 1979. Nobody does that. Nobody pays you for unleave, and you did it to two people a few meetings ago. I mean, even though it's a violation of contract, it says right in there. Unused time, forfeit. But you paid them anyway, to the tune of about $12,000 to $13,000 for two employees. So we sit up here and talk, and you guys do whatever you want. You listen, but you don't hear us. I mean, you're sitting all forced to sit here and listen, but you're not hearing us. All right? I know you're upset, I get it, I'd be too, but I wouldn't be doing what you did. All right? I wouldn't be doing it. It's just, it's just not right. This is between three people on the board, your base pay, I did the math here, the numbers are close, the base pay for all three of you is $134,400. The stipend for additional duties is $110,000, in addition to that base pay, for just three people. That's a little extreme, I think. And you're right, there's other people around, different townships that pay them whatever. I don't care. I don't live there. Those are my taxes going there. My taxes are going here, thus I'm here talking to you. The thing that you're doing is, I think, is it's the same tactics that the Democrats use with the public, right? They give you tax money, they give everybody things from paying by tax money, tax money, tax money, then those people wanna support them. Right? They wanna keep them in because it keeps it coming. Don't do that, that's not what we're about. I mean, that's just the wrong way to go. I'm sorry, it's just the wrong way to go. I noticed that there is a, an item, we're still talking about a new police station. You're right, Matt King won't give you a quote, you won't give it to me either, until you go there and officially ask him. You have to ask him for it. But if you use the numbers... But if you use the numbers that he uses for every other jurisdiction that he contracts for, that's where those numbers come from. You're right, he won't give you one until you go down there and ask him specifically for it. He won't give me one either. But what I did is I added up all the, how would it cost? School resource one of them is one of them. You can contract for a school resource officer. You can contract for four deputies, which would wound up being, as long as they can pass the test, the same officers that we have now, the same ones, they got to pass the test. The other aspect of it is, I think that, I don't know how many people are from the island, but I think that we should contract for 12-hour-a-day officer dedicated to the island, whatever times we want to set, but dedicated. It takes too long to get somebody there in the case of emergency. We just need somebody over there all the time. I know they go over and go back and forth, I get it. Last meeting I was at, we talked about, no, we didn't raise the police mills, it stayed at 4.85. Yeah, it has for a couple of years now. But you're, you're kind of being disingenuous when you say that. It stayed at 4.5, but you increased the property values that that 4.5 is based on, right? It went up 1.05, then everybody paid more. So that means on the 4.85 mills, you collected more money, to the tune of $200,000 more. But you didn't really add that into the calculations when you said we didn't increase the millage. Another thing I wanted to ask, and I don't know, I noticed on the budget that there's a line item for emergency management section, which we don't have, one that's been zeros for years. This year it's got $21,000 in it for COVID hero pay. I looked it up, the president declared COVID over on September 18th, 2022. Why, and who gets that money and who decides who gets it, if in fact we're going to pay it? Those are just questions I have and it's not going to stop. And this is, the money you're spending is out of control. You did the budget, yep, continued whatever it was that you did, continue your resolution or whatever it was that you did and passed the bills payable, but no discussion on any item on there. You did it the same last time. You said you're going to look into the suit, how much it costs. No report on what you looked into, nothing. Just assuming a couple of weeks later, everybody's going to shut up and forget about it. I didn't forget about it, I actually looked it up. And that's what it is. And it's a violation of their contract. And it's our money you're doing that with. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Any other public comments?
The subject is the Pearl Beach Pier. The road, it looks really nice, but that's about all. The bathroom 200 yards away from the dock, there's nobody on that pier going to walk to that bathroom to use it. The handicap sign where the handicap parking is, is missing. None of the lines have been painted, none of them. There's three boards down there with holes that are big enough that you can walk through. There's another board, the plank is sticking up so high you trip over it. The garbage cans haven't been emptied in three weeks. We are taking our own garbage cans down there and emptying them out so that we can use the trash cans. It's been that way all summer. So what's so great about this dock? Nothing. If I had some horsepower like the guy that owns that pontoon boat that takes vets out, I was there the day, talking to him, when he called you, Artie, and complained about a board being rotted out and a wheelchair might go there. That thing was fixed in four hours. If I'd have called you, it probably still wouldn't be fixed.
Try me tomorrow.
I'm not trying anymore, Artie, I'm sick of it. I've tried you on several occasions, nothing happens. I used to be your supporter, no more. Take care of that mess down here, it's been over three months. The people that are using the pier there tonight, and I go there every day, Artie, two, three times a day, the people that are there fishing now, none of them are within 30 miles of here. They're still all parking in Lagos parking lot because they don't know that the roadway is for them. When we got that green field next to it that city owns, that could have been a park, it's a mess. If you park in the grass, which is your property or our property, the people that own the house next door come over and raise hell about it. If they can drive back and forth that long every day to get to their property when they get their own driveway. That mess down there needs some serious looking into.
Thank you. It is a DDA project and it's not done yet?
No.
It's not done yet? So the handicap signs, the stripings, not done yet?
Kick some butt.
Any other public comments?
Well, we're getting interference from a phone, I think.
Mine's on airplane mode, just double checking, is everybody in?
My name is Diane Miller, 7311 B Lane, and I'd like to know what's going on with this water debt. I was told many years ago by employees of this township that the only trusted web, Facebook page was Clay Township Matters, Fact or Fiction. That was the only one that had truthful information. Forget about the Elginak Community News or what's happening around and all these other ones, Fact and Fiction was the place to go. I shared that post about the water debt and it was immediately taken down, very quickly. But it said that we were supposed to come to the township and have our bills looked at to determine if we were entitled to a refund. And there was, there was even a copy of a, of an audit that was mentioned about it. Of course, all that's gone, so I didn't, I figured it was good information and, but I did some other checking. Had a friend of mine who moved here in November of 2014 and she, she was concerned about the water bill, her first bill that she got in January, she came to the township offices. She was told that that water debt would be paid in 2017, they had about two years to go. Another friend purchased property for rental in 2016. She was told there was only about three or four months left to go on that water debt before it would be paid off. And then, and I, there was an article on the back of the Clay Connection, on the back of the water bill, the Clay Connection, April of 2014, that said that we refunded our bonds. And it said that there was a savings of $300,000 by, or no, $227,000 by doing that. But then the article gets cut off and it's happened to me more than once, important information gets cut off because you send your water bill back and that information is gone. So then in the next column, it says that there's a $300,000 deficit, so we had to raise the water debt by $1 per month. So it went from $25 a month to $28 a month in April. Now if we saved $227,000, how were we still in debt $300,000 and had to raise that debt? And what happened that we had to raise it somewhere around 2017 timeframe, another two more dollars up to the current $30? When is that debt going to get paid off?
Thank you for your comments, come on in.
Okay, Artie, it's the same thing that always happens. If you choose, if you choose, if you choose to answer people's questions, you answer them.
Okay, I don't have the answers in front of me.
You know, it's just like a couple of meetings ago before, you pick and choose who you will talk to and answer questions of.
Thanks for your comments, come on in, Diane, anytime. Come on in. Any other public comments? No more public comments. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the board meeting minutes of 8:21:23, the reports of board-approved bills in between meetings and August payroll.
Support. We have motion and support, any discussion on any of that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, on our new business, we have the Southwater Municipal Water Authority. Now we have a series of four contracts, I emailed this out to you guys several times to go over. There's a lot of work been done on this and as far as I know, Elginak and Ira Township are in agreement. At least that's what they conveyed to me through emails and personal conversations. My big takeaway of this was that right now Elginak is 30%, owns 30% of the capacity of the plant. Ira and Clay both own 35% of the capacity of the plant. And every year we get together, we figure out what the plant needs and we do long-term projections as far as capital improvements. And we agreed to put X amount of dollars towards that plant for the capital improvements and we do it by capacity. In other words, Ira and Clay pay 35%, Elginak pays 30. Where I had a problem with the current way things were done, if one of the municipalities goes over their capacity as far as what they're putting into the plant, they need to, they get charged, you know, so much per gallon that they put in, but they, they don't have a surcharge or anything as far as the capital expense of what we put in the 30, 35, and 35%. And that went, so in other words, if you had one company that was, or one company, one municipality was putting in half of the fluids to this plant and over their capacity, they were still paying the 35 or 30%. You know it all too well, don't you, John? So what this does, we adopted, all municipalities have to do a five-year inflow and infiltration reduction plan. I'm pretty sure we got those for everybody. But basically what it says, if a municipality is getting close to their allocated capacity, they must look at acquiring, purchasing, or leasing other, or additional capacity or at the expense of the municipality, look at designing, permitting, acquisition, and construction and increasing the capacity of the plant. Or develop a plan at their sole expense to detect and eliminate the sources of inflow, infiltration, and make that happen and cut what they're, what they're putting to the If they fail to do that, the authority will have, be able to give them a surcharge of the municipality that's over their capacity for the flow in excess of twice the rate of their current established payment for what they have to pay per gallon. So they're going to be paying the authority double. And that money, those proceeds shall be placed in improvement account, a capital improvement account for the plant. The municipality will be placed in effect and it will be enforced a moratorium on issuance of additional building permits within their municipality jurisdiction. In other words, if they're going over their capacity, we're not going to let anybody else in their, in their community hooked up, hook up until that is, that requirement is satisfied. That's it in a nutshell, it has some teeth. But in here, there's four agreements. It's a draft, or it's an agreement between the municipalities with the Articles of Incorporation. We have the employee leasing agreement with the county. We have the service agreement with how we're going to collect the money and when we're going to pay it to the authority. And the transfer agreement, how the county is going to transfer all the assets to the new authority. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or if you're prepared to vote and pass on it. We could postpone it for another meeting, but I just soon put this baby to bed myself. We were waiting for the attachments, which you have now, description of the local collection systems, the, all the stuff that's, the county's going to transfer over to us, all of that. John, you're real familiar with this whole thing, I know. How do you feel about it?
So what's the timeframe that if a municipality is deemed over their percentage, that those penalties take effect?
Well, if they're getting close, we give them six months to, to implement one of the two plans, acquire, purchase, or lease capacity, or figure out how to make that plant increase the capacity.
So is that based on one quarter of excessive flow?
I would say, well, six months.
So two quarters.
For that.
But after two quarters, then the penalties take effect?
I don't think that our plant can currently hold any more capacity, can it? I mean, would they have to buy it from us? Because it was my understanding, Elginak was the one going over.
Well, they would have to buy it from either, if it was Elginak, they would have to buy it from Clay or Ira, or they're going to have to do something with the plant to increase the capacity.
If there isn't any more room, is there? I mean, is that possible?
Yeah, there is, it's possible. Or, or they're going to have to fix their problem, which would be the preferred method, and fix their issues where infiltration is going into the system and, and, you know, we're getting, every time it rains, we get a shot of more water.
I kind of thought that they were going to be more than 30 this time, like maybe they'd go 32 and we'd go 34, 34 or something, because they were more, I didn't think they'd stay with 30.
I don't believe Clay Township wants to sell any of its capacity.
All right.
I don't believe Ira wants to sell any of their capacity, that's their decision.
Elginak's just a.
So we don't arbitrarily make those numbers up. It's.
Overestablishing the authority, so the numbers can be what they are, but, you know, you said we have more capacity, so.
Well, Clay's been paying for 35% of that, I don't want to give any of it up because we've been investing it for 50, 60 years.
How are the water rates going to be handled?
You mean the sewer rates? Well, there is in here that, oh, if the municipality is being charged more, they cannot, the municipality and not the municipality customers will be charged. So it shall be paid within 45 days. In other words, they just can't pass that charge over to their, their customers. The municipality itself has to pay for it.
Doesn't that mean the taxpayers just end up paying for it? I mean, we're, we couldn't absorb that kind of money, how could anybody else? Sorry, just had to say it.
So as far as the contribution to the capital improvement fund, that's not based on flow percentages?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Well, of the capacity, it's based on capacity.
It's based on allotment, but not actual?
Right.
So if you, if you, if you go 10% over, you're still paying your, your-
Well, that's going to have to be adjusted, but yeah, I mean, we're adjusting it in the rates that they pay.
Because that's wear and tear on the plant.
Right, and that's why we brought this whole thing up.
Right.
Because, you know, we pay for pumps out of the capital improvement. Well, if we're not using our capacity, and another municipality isn't, but one is using over, you know, they got to pay their more share, and that's why what they pay goes into a capital improvement account to be used for capital improvement.
Based on their capacity percentage, not on their actual usage, though, correct?
Right, mm-hmm.
2.7 million gallons per capacity.
No, actually, the, the penalty is based on their flows, John.
The penalty's based on their flows, but not the contribution that each municipality-
Right, we initially put in 35, 35, and 30.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is an enterprise fund, correct?
Yes, it's enterprise fund, it can't be-
It's not funded with tax dollars?
No, not funded with tax dollars, one nickel.
So it says that we're leasing employees until February 29th, 2024, from the county with the contracts. Could you speak up to me? It says that we are leasing employees through February 29th, 24. So are we, is, is the group already working on new contracts for them?
Well, it is hard, because the new group doesn't exist, but I've had talks with them in there, and we will be doing a new contract. That's why we need some lag time, and they're going to stay county employees for a month of time, because there's no way this authority would be able to get contracts, fringe benefits, and policies in place for them to be direct employees. And their contract does end at the end of March, whenever that is. Their collective bargaining agreement ends then, too. So the authority at that time would take them over. I know Chris, I've been involved in this, too, quite granular.
So is the water authority a good thing or a bad thing, as far as the public is concerned?
I don't think they're going to see much difference. I think, well, before the county managed it, and we had some say on what was going on, now that authority, the authority is going to take over control of that, and the authority will be responsible to it. The authority is made up of one representative from Clay with alternate, one from Elginak with alternate, one from Ira with the alternate, and they will be ultimately making the decisions on how the plant's run.
Well, I know that the county backed out of the water situation for all the counties down here.
Contract, wastewater.
Wastewater.
Yeah, wastewater. And it never did make sense to me why they got out of it and handled the municipality. And I would love to know the reason why.
Well, truthfully, they, they didn't think, is the road commission should be running water or sewage plants.
I went and visited them, Mark, and they said they had employees retiring, but before they told me that, I FOIA'd a lot of information, and I did find in there, you know, that they were concerned about their responsibility, if there were going to be fines, and their liability, and they wanted to get out of it and let us handle it. So I'm a little concerned about the liability, and I guess the whole authority will have share of liability, right, if something-
The authority will have insurance, they have quotes on it already. I believe they're using nickel and SAF.
Okay. Because that, that was straight in the information that I FOIA'd, that they were concerned about their liabilities, and we're going to break the contract with, with us, and-
Kurt Weston ran, was the head of the road commission for several years, and he had a background in wastewater treatment.
Yeah, and he was retiring.
The new, he retired, the new director has very little knowledge of it, and that's why they opted to get out of the business. The county was managing the plant, not Clay, not Elginak, it was the county that was managing the plant, and they just wanted to get out of the, out of it.
I mean, there were some concerns about the overflow, but it wasn't-
Yes, maybe, I wanted it to be addressed, and the county really never did. I mean, we talked about, but never had anything signed. So the overflows just kept on going on, and going on, and going on with no repercussion.
And, I mean, they asked, you know, all of the townships, Clay, Ira, and Elginak to fix it repeatedly, not necessarily that it was us, but it wasn't being done, so they wanted out.
And we are fixing our, our share, but as you all well know, we got a big sewer project that we've been working on for two or three years, and we got federal funding. We had a million dollar saw grant to do the research, and we got another million dollar earmark to fix our interceptor, which we hope to put out to bid here around November.
So Maureen mentioned liability is one of the issues that they're backing out of. Are we going to assume that liability, which, whatever it may be, and I'd love to know what it is?
The authority does.
Yeah, so?
It's liability for fines.
Well, the liability isn't going away.
No, the, the authority assumes the liability, and they, they've gotten quotes and nickel and SAF for insurance to handle that.
Instead of the county, so this has increased our costs as a township, because county's not handling it, so.
Well, the county was charging us.
Yeah.
If it increased the cost or not, I really don't know yet.
And I assume our lawyers looked out, over all this paperwork?
Yeah.
She was, she involved?
Well, not her, because she, she contracts, she also contracts with Ira, and it's a conflict of interest, so she handed it off to a partner attorney, and he blessed us. I don't know how many meetings we had, countless meetings, back and forth with the attorneys, and, you know, we each, we had an attorney design it, the authority, and then we had our own independent attorney look at it, same as Ira has their own independent attorney they hired to look at this, and I believe Elginak has done the same.
I think if we could just wait one more meeting, I'd like to really, you know, pick through the whole thing to the 18th meeting, that's not too far off, maybe?
No, we can, we can do that, but I've been emailing these to you for the last two, three months.
I know, I know, but these questions-
And there's crickets coming back.
I know.
So if you have any questions-
We probably had them.
Please.
Do we have any other options? Do, what do we do if we don't approve this authority? What happens to our sewage?
Good question.
We don't have a choice.
The employees eventually don't get paid, and they leave?
I mean, we don't have a choice, but we have a choice on the verbiage of the agreement.
Right.
That's all we have a choice of. We have to do it, the county. They were almost done with contract anyway, right? It was like maybe two more years, or something like that?
Two or three more years. Truthfully, in their eyes, they wanted it done six months ago.
Yeah.
I told them that's not going to happen.
So the different agreements that are set before us that we're reviewing right now, are you confident that Elginak will sign this agreement as is? Do you have the same confidence that Ira will sign it?
I'm told from the Ira supervisor that they've talked about it, and he told me that, you know, as far as he knows, it all looks good, and I've had conversations with the city manager of Elginak, not, not as much, but, you know, basically, they're going to take it forward to their board, too. And, you know, I emailed all the parties involved, and hey, I'm going forward with these as is, and, you know, it looks good, let's do it. I mean, we've been, I've been trying to get this finalized into you since, I think, March or April, but they just weren't done. And to our satisfaction, I got a good draft that's, we're all agreeing on, so, like I say, if you want to postpone it, you can, but I don't think it's going to change at
And what about the county employees that we are now going, that the authority is now going to lease from the county?
Yeah.
Are they on board?
Yeah. They don't have much of a choice, unfortunately.
Well, I imagine they were under contract before.
Yeah, they're, they're under contract.
Probably a similar type of contract.
And, believe me, they were worried. I've, I've had numerous talks with them personally, and I think they, I have their confidence that, you know, the authority's going to have to pay, pay them equal to or better with benefits and everything else. I mean, it's all, they do a great job running that plant, those, and the plant management. They do-
I know those guys down there.
A great job. I mean, you can walk in there, I could take everybody down there tomorrow, you will not find one cobweb, no dirt in a sewage plant. I mean, they, they take great pride in the work they do. You'd back me up on that, wouldn't you, John?
For sure.
I mean, I see the capacity agreement, and it says, you know, that they're going to adopt a five-year reduction plan.
Yeah, I think we all, we already have, Elginak, we all, all three of us already have done that.
And they're going to proceed within six months, like you say, but it really doesn't give a deadline date to acquire, purchase?
It depends on their capacity.
What is, what's the, what's the, the funds that are going to go into this plan that's going to be for rebuilding or whatever, what you call it?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement plan? When do those come into play, and are they charged by the gallon, or, I don't know where that is?
They would be charged double what they would normally be collected if they're over capacity. The amount that they're over capacity is charged double of their normal rate, and that would be put into a capital improvement plan.
But when does that happen?
Is that how you understand it, Chris?
Yeah.
Does that happen at the six-month mark? Or they, do they get notice for six months, shall proceed within six months of such written notice to implement one of the following? So they've got six months, and then at that six-month date, if they haven't implemented anything, then we start to double their rates?
If, if they have to implement a policy, they begin paying penalty immediately.
Immediately.
As soon as they, as soon as they are over capacity, they pay penalty immediately.
Okay.
And there is a section on the back that says, "The, the authority shall surcharge the constituent municipality for the flow in excess of said constituent municipalities designated and allocated capacity at a rate equal to twice the then-current and established commodity rate applicable to the constituent municipality's customers as rent for the use of the excess capacity, and the surcharge proceeds shall be placed in the improvement account. The surcharge provided by this subparagraph shall be billed directly by the authority to the constituent municipality and not to constituent municipality's customers. It shall be paid within 45 days."
And they, they can't issue any more building permits?
And that's number two.
Yeah, yeah, moratorium on issuance of additional building permits.
Essentially, from a Clay Township perspective, we're just going to be paying the authority instead of the county, and this agreement is just going to be a little bit more restrictive on the communities that are over capacity, is my understanding correct?
Yeah.
In a nutshell.
Every month, we, we send a check to, right now, the county for the sewage plant. Now, we're going to be sending it to the authority.
And after six months, if they haven't come together with the plan and they're still in violation, then what happens?
They either have to buy capacity, or, or expand the plant, or reduce what they're sending to us.
And if they don't?
Keep on paying us.
So they can just keep paying double, right?
If they want.
I mean, what's it going to cost them to buy-
See, right now, there's no, there's no fines or fees or anything.
Yeah.
There's zero.
What's it going to cost them to buy capacity?
I don't know, they'd have to figure it out.
Because I'm, you know, if that's going to be cheaper than paying double, then going out and buying land and whatever, you know, then all three of us can just overload this plant, and nobody's going to do anything, because-
Well, that's not going to happen.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at the worst-case scenario. There should be, that's why I say, you know, I'd like to talk to the attorney, ask them those questions.
Well, if it's overcapacity, and the plant is failing, then we have Eagle, the state would come involved, and everything else. We're trying to prevent that from ever happening by, with this agreement.
Right.
You know, we get, they, they have to get a discharge permit all the time, too, and they're under Eagle guidelines and inspections.
Did you say all three municipalities have to agree with this?
Yes.
So when is theirs going to a vote with their board, do you know?
No, I don't.
Because, I mean, I, those are probably, I don't know, I wanted to come to some of these meetings, and you said they were private. So can we contact them and find that out?
Well, I assume, I don't think Elginak is tonight, so I'm hoping it would be their meeting in two weeks.
I think it's Wednesday.
Wednesday? Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't think they're addressing, I don't know, and Ira, they're, they're going to do it pretty soon.
Well, I'm just saying, if theirs not going to be till two weeks, if we wait till the 18th, it's not any problem, because they're, they won't even be ready.
Like I say, it's okay if we postpone it. I wanted to put it in front of you guys, it's a big decision, and, I mean, like I said, I emailed everybody multiple times, this-
And I can come in and talk to the attorney and have questions with you if I have them.
Well, yeah, I know you have, but this is the first time I've seen it in this, yep.
Well, he'd been emailing to them, I've been looking at it. So I'll make a motion then to postpone the vote on the Southwater Municipality Municipal Water Authority agreements until September 18th meeting.
Motion to support. Any more discussion? We have a motion to support. Any discussion?
And then, this is all on the website now, too, so the public can look at it, because all this is, all the agreements are out there, and if they have any questions, they can contact us, too.
Okay, motion to postpone. No discussion, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll postpone it, bring back next question. Does anybody have any specific things they want me to find out before? If you do, let me know.
I'll send you an email.
Would you feel more comfortable if we had a, the attorney handling is at present at the next meeting? I mean, we'll have to pay him, but it would, would it be more-
Can we make a motion on that?
Well-
I think, I mean, I think we can just send her our questions, right? It's easier than-
It's him, but yeah.
Yeah, it's not Christine.
Yeah.
It's not Christine.
That's right, because-
Because she's got the conflict.
Yeah, we can send the email questions, I think. I don't know, unless you want to.
All right, it's a little obscure, but I'm, I'm curious about, like, acts of God, like, what's been a strange summer, right? So we've had some torrential rains, right? So what happens in the event that we get four inches of rain, and all three municipalities are in violation?
Mm-hmm.
You know, would you all, we would all pay the fine?
We've been there many times in the past, Chris.
That's it?
We've been there many times in the past. That was one of my questions, is how do we handle fines and penalties from Eagle when it may be only one or two municipalities who are guilty? when it may be only one or two municipalities who are guilty?
Right. That's a good question.
Because it may very well happen.
The devil's in the details, right?
Yeah. See, the plant's rated for 2.7 million gallons a day. It can take, it has taken up to 7 million gallons in one day without breaching. I think that a little while ago, we had a day where we had 6 million gallons, and the plant handled it, but they were sweating. And we were restricting the flow we were putting to them, just to give the plant a chance to...
Catch up.
Catch up. One thing I know what they're looking at is putting a big buffer tank, if you will, to hold, if we are going over with a rain event, to hold excess capacity, so they can filter it, and then, you know, at a later time when it drops down. So there's things that, for the short term, we can do, but it, like I say, if there's a municipality that's putting more than their capacity on a regular basis, they need to fix it or pay more for the capital, the capital expense of running this plant.
And it's a clear measuring from where it's coming from?
Yeah.
It's different pipes or wherever it comes in?
Cell meters.
Separate meters.
Meters. Okay, we'll postpone it. If you guys have any questions about it, let me know, and I'll get those answered. Okay, next, we have administrative policy for salary exemption vacation provisions. Cindy, you came up with this, right?
Well, we were discussing before about paying out employees' vacation time. Some employees in their contract were paid out for vacation time, and some were not. So I took an average of the contracts. I put it together, I sent this out to the board two weeks ago. The items that are highlighted are, were areas that could be modified, looking for feedback. I did not receive any feedback from the board, so I put it in the board packet as is. I mean, it can, it doesn't have to be, it, you know, it's totally up to the pleasure of the board what they want to do with it. This was just an example. If there is going to be vacation time paid out, there also needs to be a time off reporting to go with it. That's all.
That some of the department heads, they do have the ability to be paid out, and others do not, right?
Correct. So when we were discussing that, the board wanted to do, look at a single policy to cover all salaried employees, so that they would all be the same and not different?
I thought all of the contracts were, that said forfeited. Who, who has the option of getting paid? I thought they also...
Offhand, I don't know, but I sent out that information with us two weeks ago.
Well, I, I make a motion that we have an overall policy that anything, any time that is not used is forfeited. That's my motion, on all the department heads. They need to have their time off, and we don't need much of a budget.
Would that be vacation, sick, personal?
Yes. Make a motion that all of the department heads are the same. They have sick time, they have personal time. If they don't use it, they lose it, as in every other corporation in the land.
You know, the flip side of that is we're less effective, right? If they're taking their more, if they're taking all their whole time off, they're not on the job site.
I know.
And the repercussion is, we could be less effective, right?
Well, that's why we paid Lance, because there was a special situation.
All righty.
We're having a meeting up here, not back there, please hold your comments.
That's why we paid Lance, because there was a special situation, you know? But I don't want to look at this as messing with our budget and not knowing what we're going to have to pay every year, and basically giving them a bonus.
Yeah, I'm not saying that I disagree with you.
Yeah.
I just, we have to understand, like, both sides of the coin, what effects. Like, I know our department heads, you know, they've been with us a long time.
Right.
They've accrued a lot of time off.
Just have to look at a more effective way to use it.
There's a motion, do we have any support?
I'll support.
You support?
I support.
The motion is that we will not be, can you restate that, Maureen?
All department heads that have vacation and sick time will use it or lose it.
So, in essence, in this policy, we're going to strike unused vacation time to be accrued with a max accrual of 200 hours. We're going to strike that, because they're going to lose it.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm in agreement with Maureen on this. Me and a salary workforce, you can pretty much take any time off that you want and still get paid for it. As you'll see in the next paragraph down there, I wish it was another way, but this is one of the standards in any industry that you go to, that, you know, now, I can understand the police department, and maybe the fire department, and their contractual issues or whatever, and why they have that, but for regular salaried officers or employees...
Well, this is for department heads, but...
I've never been exposed to it.
That's going to trickle down. I mean, if we do it for the department heads, the employees are going to want it, too. You know, it'll trickle down, is my opinion, I don't know.
Well, is this in place, Cindy, right now, for union contracts, rank and file?
Union contracts have their own provisions, depending on what the collective bargaining unit is, but this was for strictly non-unionized salaried employees, which we have department heads, we have assessing, we have code enforcement.
Basically, it's police chief coach.
It was at the request of the board, when some were getting paid out and some weren't, for us to come up with something to meet into the middle, and so it would be across the board, the same for everyone. If you want to leave it the way it is, that's absolutely fine, but if we're paying out employees, we have to be tracking their time, because I have to be able to validate the time they have left to be paid out, that is all.
If this policy changed Connor Dick's employee contract that we have in place, I think the employee contract supersedes this policy, wouldn't it?
It says, effective, you know, July 1st, 23, which was, we were talking about this in June, I mean, that would obviously be updated, the date, it says, "Until all current contracts remain as stated until expiration," so it would go into future contracts. We can't arbitrarily change a contract that's already in force.
And this was just mainly to have a policy?
Correct, because I cannot pay out at the end of the year without the auditors wanting all kinds of documentation, that the board actually approved it, because it's not stipulated in their contract they can be paid out. And then they want to know how we come up with these amount of hours, because if we don't, we're not tracking time for salaried employees. So, thus why the second policy was for time tracking, because if we're going to pay them out, we have to track their time.
Query on the audit, right? I think we paid Lance, and we paid Chief Coach, right?
Yes. And Chief Rose's contract says he gets paid out.
I've been holding off on bringing Chief Rose's contract to the board until we figure this out.
It says we do pay out for the fire chief?
Yes.
It just doesn't seem really fair. I know he fills in a lot, you know, but...
And then, and then, you know, the township offices are only open four days a week, you know, Monday through Thursday.
Well, police and fire departments...
Everybody's off on Friday.
Police and fire department are open more than four days a week and close to water.
Lance, too, right?
They're open 24 hours a day.
That's right.
I'm not concerned with them.
Well, that's who we're talking about.
But it's also assessing, and it's not just water and fire and police, it's assessing and...
Salaried employees.
Salary employees.
Yeah, so it's...
What do you mean?
That would be you guys, right?
No.
No, you're not department heads, I thought you would be.
We're not salaried employees.
Does not apply to elected officials.
We get no vacation and no payouts. All right.
You don't get tracked either, right? You only get your time tracked or have to necessarily be here at 7:00.
Any more discussion on this?
Well, breaking this apart, the vacation days, to me, are fine. If the unused, occurred overtime, or maximum accrual of 200 hours, that's the issue.
Correct, so that's why I was asking Maureen, she wants to strike the unused vacation time and the employees lying below it.
Right.
And then benefit time utilized will be forfeited, is what her motion was.
Did you want to amend your motion?
I'm good. What do you think I should change?
Well, so, could you restate it, though?
I'm making a motion that vacation time for department heads is forfeited if it's not used, for all department heads, and a new policy. It's going to remain in effect until their new contracts, but as of then, you know, we need to find a better way to have them use their vacation time, they need their time off.
And then there was discussion about, Mark and others, that they're okay with the occurred, accrued vacation time, but not doing, doing the payout on the benefit time.
So an employee that's here for two years, if he doesn't take in a vacation, it's 80 hours we have to pay him for, on top of his salary, right? That's what you're saying? Because a two-year employee gets two weeks off.
The sentence that says, "Employees that utilize half of the annual amount allotted within the given fiscal year can request by June 1st to have half of vacation time paid out." So if someone worked for two years and they got 80 hours of vacation, they would have to use 40 hours of vacation, and they could accrue, that sentence says that they could accrue the other 40 hours.
They could get paid for the 40 hours. I'm saying use it or lose it, that's just...
Okay, but, but there's layers to the onion, right? So it's not department heads, it's salaried employees. So you need to amend your motion to state salaried township employees, and then the part B is the benefit time. So you have to have the same discussion on vacation that we just, and we had to apply it to the benefit time, because we have to look at both. Got me?
You make the motion.
Well, we're still talking about it, right?
Yeah. I mean, the benefit time is their sick time, right?
Yeah, but in your motion, it was only vacation time.
Yeah, okay.
So you want...
Yeah, it's all, it's all time. All right, so I make the motion that department heads, salaried employees, will use their vacation time for their vacation day, vacation time, or their benefit time. They will use it, or they will forfeit it, but it will not be paid out.
That's your, that's your motion?
Right, that's my motion. And of course, it's going to stay in effect until their new contracts, but we want them to use their vacation time, and, you know, if they have sick time, if they need it.
Do you still support that?
I still support that, but I still want to discuss the benefit time.
Yeah.
As you say, you have 10 days of benefit time.
That's what I said, benefit time is...
When does, when does a salary employee go on medical leave? Five days?
Seven days.
Seven days.
Right, but they might be sick three days, and then three days, then four days.
Well, I'm just, they got 10 days of benefit time, so I guess they could take it all at once, no matter what, and attach it to their vacation.
That's sick days, personal days, et cetera.
But they have to have a doctor's note or something, they can't just say they're sick.
I was just trying to make a correlation between 10-day benefit time and personal or sick time, and when does it roll over into a medical leave?
So, short-term, disability kicks in at seven days?
Yeah.
Seven days. So just change that to seven days.
Is that what all the, all of the department heads and salaried employees have now, is 10 days of benefit time, which is either personal or sick time, that's what they have, all of them now?
Yes.
In addition to their vacation?
Yes.
So if they, you know, if they didn't want to go on medical leave, and they were close to being better, you know, they could use part of their vacation time.
It's not all necessarily sick. People take the day off to get a mortgage, people take the day off to go to the doctor, people...
I said personal or sick time.
Correct.
But they could use a vacation day if they didn't have any personal time left. That's how we get, you know, we use our time.
I guess I would rather see seven days of sick time before it rolls over to medical leave, and then, you know, scratch the benefit time out.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it's, it's sick or personal days.
It's not just for safety, personal.
I know, but I'm telling you, scratch the benefit time out, just make it sick time.
You don't want to give them any personal time?
They got vacation time, they can call it for a vacation day.
There you go.
You want seven days instead of 10 days?
That's right. Well, that's saying that they only, they get sick once a year.
Let them roll it over.
And no, it's not, it's not once a year. When you're sick, you're sick, whether you're sick for three days, four days, or whatever the case, maybe you're sick. There shouldn't be any time charged against you.
Right.
When you're sick, and you go into a seventh day, then you roll over to medical leave. That's all I'm trying to say.
Right, well, if you're sick one, one time for four days, and then three or four months later, you're sick again for four days.
If you call in sick, whether you're sick, whether it's, whether it's this month, next month, two months, it's, you're still calling in sick.
Okay.
I don't care how many days it is, but if you go over, if you go over seven days in a row, or consecutive, then it goes into medical leave again.
I just think they're used to having their 10 days, Mark, so if we reduce it down to seven...
I'll go to, maybe five, that would have been about it, but it doesn't matter, you know, if it's going to be 10 days, that's fine.
They're used to their 10 days, so I don't want to mess with that.
I was just trying to make a point that...
Yeah, I just don't, and a lot of people don't use their sick days or their personal time, you know? I mean, when I worked, I didn't use all my sick days.
Well, I was, you know, I was trying to make, you know, make it more beneficial, more acceptable, that it doesn't matter how many times you're sick in a year, you get that time off, or you can't come to work, whether it's one a month, 10 a month, I don't know.
So, it's just that...
It's a year, right?
I think we're talking about some different things.
Yes, we are. So here's my position, board. I think I could get on the board with the 200 hours of vacation time, being a use it or lose it policy. But as far as the 10 days of personal and/or sick time, I'd like to see it chopped. I'd like to see them use up to five days, and the other days, they could potentially be paid out, and I think that should happen on an annual basis. I don't think they should be able to roll them. That would keep us current and incentivize them for being here. You know, once one of our guys calls in sick, it puts the pressure on, on the rest of the township. But if they're healthy, and, and they can make the trip, and say, well, you know, five of them I got to use, and the other five I could potentially get paid for, I mean, we've been taking a big step forward.
I guess we really need to know exactly how many employees this is, and what their tenure is here. Because, you know, we know, police chief's got...
Six employees.
Six employees. We know he's got five weeks, right? He's got over 20 years. So he's already got five weeks of vacation time. He's probably never going to use it, five weeks and five days, so we're always going to be paying Chief Coach for five days of sick time. The assessor, I don't know how long she's been here. Are they all in a three-week or more category of vacation time? Who are they that we're voting on?
I don't have their personnel files in front of me.
It shouldn't matter, because it comes home.
I still don't see what's wrong, if you scratch the benefit time completely, if you need the time off for one day, call in for a vacation day, and have that charged against your two weeks, five weeks, 20 weeks, whatever the case it may be.
Well, it's nice to have your vacation... Well, it's nice to have your vacation time and still have a personal day or a sick day, Mark, you know? We don't want to take away their personal or sick time, but I don't want to pay out. That's all.
I'm not saying if you're sick, you call in sick. If you want a day off to go to the ballgame, that is the vacation day. What is wrong with that?
You're thinking per event, right, Mark?
Yeah.
Seven days per event.
Per event, but this is for the whole year.
Yeah, that's not what that means.
This is for the whole year.
Chris, so you're suggesting we drop that employees utilize half the annual amount allotted line under benefit time.
I'm stating that the benefit time is not utilized. That the board would consider paying out up to five days.
Right.
On an annual basis with no rollover.
Under vacation time, we have the utilize half the time, basically moving that line under benefit time.
I don't, it seems logical to me, but that's just my...
Yeah.
I tend to agree.
That's what you're saying, Chris, is vacation is use it or lose it. And the benefit days, 10 days, is we'll pay you for five or you use or lose the other five.
To me, that's vacation time.
Right.
You've given them five, you've given them 10 days vacation time.
Mark, you've been in automotive your whole life.
Yes, I have, and that's, and what I just outlined before is exactly what it is. Ask anybody that worked in the automotive company, what is it? What did I just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I can't give them paid money for any of their time off, you know? I just can't do it because that's messing with the budget. That's giving them their own raise, you know?
This is salary, not hourly. It's different. It's a different stroke.
But nobody's really keeping track of their time working.
Well, somebody should be keeping track. The department head, the, you know, the clerk, I mean...
That's the next policy.
That's what Cindy put together. So, I mean, but somebody has to be keeping track of that because how do we know how many weeks of vacation they're doing?
I've been in HR all my life, 45 years.
I worked at Chrysler's.
Please.
So Mark and Maureen do have a motion, so unless Maureen wants to amend it.
I'm not paying for half of their benefit time. If they don't use their benefit time, they forfeit that too. And it's currently at 10 days. I'm saying they can have their 10 days, you know, to use throughout the whole year. Mark, you want to get rid of the 10 days altogether and just let them have vacation time?
Yeah. So does he support your motion or does he not?
Do you want to not support it now?
Well, I supported the 200 hours. Now this down here, this should be a separate motion, maybe. I don't know.
Do you want to cut it down to five days or seven days?
Do you want to get a supporting motion or not?
You want to cut it down to five days or seven days? I can amend it.
Make an amendment to five days would be good.
All right, so another motion. I make a motion.
We have to vote on the first motion.
I'm amending it. Can I amend it?
You can amend it.
All right, I'm amending my current motion to say that the department heads will have their vacation days.
Maureen, it's salaried employees.
Salary employees.
Okay.
And department heads.
You could just say salaries.
The salary employees
It covers everything.
will forfeit their unused vacation time. And they will have five days of benefit time to be used at their discretion, which is personal or sick time. And those will also be forfeited if they don't use them. So instead of 10 days, we're reducing it to five days of benefit time, which is personal or sick time. But any time that is not used will be forfeited and not paid out to keep the budget intact.
Do you support that?
I support it with discussion.
Okay, let's have discussion.
Where is death in the family coming in?
Beregment days. Beregment.
In their contract, that's separate.
Beregment.
Is that in their contract, separate?
Where's the policy on that?
On their contract.
That's all separate.
I don't know. They get between three and five days, is it?
I'll hand it over.
Or as many as you need, depending on the relationship.
Correct.
Yeah, varies between, you know, relationship.
And, I mean, you can also go on disability with that, too, if you have a close family member and a doctor says...
Under the new laws, yeah. And maternity leave.
It's all in the contract.
Okay, I support, or I already support.
Yes. Any more discussion?
Are we only discussing this that's placed in front of us?
Yes.
So the motion is no payout of vacation time, five days of benefit time, forfeited if not used.
And what?
Forfeited if not used.
Yes.
So they would not be able to accrue any
Correct.
and roll it?
Correct.
Not even a week?
Correct.
I myself would like to see they can use half of their, well, benefit time and then get paid out for that half. That's easy to budget for.
I wasn't under the impression that we were here to take anything away from anyone, just kind of make it uniform. I mean, this is actually
We're taking...
Taking benefits away from them, so I'm not on board with that.
What's that?
Said I'm not on board with that, but we can certainly do a roll call.
Not the five days.
So I'm a little confused. So isn't the 10 days already in place?
Yes.
Okay, so are we changing contracts?
It was, no, it was brought for future contracts of the, to determine whether it's paid out or not. So, like I said, we weren't here to change days and take anything away from anyone. It was to determine what's going to be paid out and what's not.
A salaried employee can take any time off that they wish, as far as I'm concerned, with pay because they're on salary. It comes to the point where, well, okay, so I have a beregment or whatever the case may be, you know, I need this time off, I'll take a vacation day or I'm going to call in that I'm sick or whatever the case may be, you know, just...
Well, that's not how it works.
Fire chief needs to be there.
If they take a day off as a personal or as a personal day and they get 10 a year or sick days.
You know, Chief Coach.
That's the way it works. They just can't, I'm not going to go to work tomorrow. Like you said, I'm not going to go to work tomorrow, but I still get paid. It doesn't work that way.
Or on salary, it should work that way. Salary is quite different than somebody being on hourly.
Well, I mean, if Chief's, if there's a fire and Chief doesn't show up, he's got to show up, you know? Same thing with Coach.
They're all in a different...
We need our...
That's what this is about.
A different vessel than what a regular salary employee is.
But that's what these are about.
But they're one of the, it's one and the same per discussion here today, Mark.
It's about them.
We're talking about them as well.
That's why I said it was important to know who the people are.
Our department heads are non-union employees.
Yeah, I take that.
Okay. I'm just restating, that's all.
So do you want to let them have their 10 days, like Cindy says? Because that's what they have now.
You made a motion. Let's vote on it.
All right.
Okay.
You have any roll call?
And so the motion stands as five days, right?
Yes.
And nothing's paid out for benefit.
Correct.
And that's actually taking days away from our employees.
I think we shouldn't take the days away.
Well, but that's the motion you made.
Can I amend it again then?
Well, let's just vote on it and put it to bed. So, okay, let's do a roll call.
Cindy Valentine, no. Crystal Regan.
No.
Kristi Hiltonen.
No.
Artie Bryson.
No.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
No. Okay, it fails.
Now we can...
Anyone want to make a new motion?
I mean, are you guys bent on paying them for this money? Are you, I mean... Because I'm not going to keep making motions. If you're, if we're going to vote, then you're going to pay them, then.
So can we just discuss for a minute?
Yeah.
So I am in favor of them being able to roll over some vacation. If there was some kind of out-of-country trip planned or something and someone had two weeks and they wanted to save up a week. I just don't want us to get in a predicament where we have our hundreds of hours of time and now they want to cash it out. So we need something that caps the rollover, but also lets them accrue enough that if they're trying to save up for a big trip, that they have some time. I am in favor of them to continue to have 10 days, but for it not to be paid out.
And just can roll over five?
No.
Roll over all 10?
10 days. You get 10 days a year and you either use it or you lose it. That's any place that I've ever worked and any place that I've ever heard of in my family, it's use it or lose it on your, your sick and your personal time.
That's the vacation time you can roll over.
How do you support, you're talking about rolling vacation time?
Yes.
Banking.
But a certain amount.
Banking, not pay out.
Vacation time.
Banking.
I don't want to get in a spot where we're paying out.
Two, up to how many hours?
200, 100?
I mean, would, I mean, if somebody had three weeks of vacation and they wanted to roll over two weeks and have a, have five weeks off if they were planning...
That's 80 hours.
I mean, if they had a, if they knew they had a surgery coming up or something like that and they wanted... I mean, I'm in favor.
Surgeries are a medical problem.
I'm not in favor of banking five weeks and then, you know, I mean, we need people to be here.
Right.
For how long do you propose they can bank it?
I mean, it should be on a yearly, you bank, you would bank hypothetically, you would bank two weeks and you would use that the following year.
So theoretically, the front office union contract, they can accrue up to 160 hours. So once they hit 160, they actually accrue time. They're paid hourly, they accrue it. By law, because they accrue it, they are paid out when they separate from employment if they don't use it. So they can get up to 160 and once they hit 160, they need to start taking time. If they're not taking time off, they just don't accrue any more time.
And they lose it or use it?
You're proposing 80? Up to 80 hours?
Well, that's what we're, I mean, I'm saying that hypothetically. That's what we're discussing. I mean...
A roll over.
Yeah, I'm going to put you in a corner here.
No, I'm just saying, I'm trying to think of different scenarios where people would need several weeks of time. The birth of a baby or something like that.
So you want to make 160 hours?
I mean, if someone had three weeks of vacation and they could roll over another three weeks of vacation, that would give them six weeks the following year.
That's too many. I mean, we need them here. That's why they're salaried employments, employees and department heads. I mean, two weeks is even a lot. I don't want to go 160.
So we're not paying them out?
Yeah, we're rolling it over, but you don't want them to take six weeks off. You don't want them to have three weeks and take in three weeks.
But what if they have a circumstance where they need that amount of time?
I'm having surgery.
You go on medical. You go on medical if you have surgery. You know, I've had surgeries. You go on medical and you get paid. But we need them here at the job. That's, these are salary employees.
Someone please make a motion. I'm begging you.
Go ahead, Kristi.
So I'll make a motion that we allow unused vacation time to be accrued with a max of 80 hours. Now I'm stuck on the employees that utilize. I would say my motion includes benefit time to be forfeited if not used at 10 days, which is what they're getting.
So you're saying unused vacation time, they can roll over and bank up to 80 hours?
Yes.
The rest would be used. Or up to a year?
Well, no more than 80 hours in a given year, so they can't, they can't compound that year after year. If it doesn't get used, they're at a max spec of 80 hours.
No payouts. I'll support that.
And then what, where are we at with benefits? Use it or lose it?
Use it or lose it, 10 days.
10 days. And we're striking employees that utilize half the annual amount allotted within the given fiscal year can request by June 1st to have half the vacation time paid out. We're striking that.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
So let me, so the motion, I don't think we have a support yet.
I support it.
Okay, so the motion is unused vacation time can be accrued, rolled over, whatever you want to say.
Banked.
Banked, 80 hours a year. There is no payout for banked vacation time. Benefit times for personal or sick times, 10 days. And if it's not used, it will be forfeited. Is that how everybody understands it?
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes, sure.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes, because I'm tired of talking about it.
Mark Bouchard.
Same, yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Phew, thank you.
And I'd like to tell the board that this is what it's about. We figure it out till we come to a consensus. This was good work by you guys. All right.
We also do need to adopt the time off reporting policy.
Yes, I forgot.
I make a motion to adopt the salary exempt time off, time off reporting policy.
Support.
Motion and support.
Got to keep track.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the Michigan Home Labor Assistance Fund. Michigan State Housing Development Authority provide participation agreement. Want to take that away?
Yes, so this is a participation agreement that we received from MISTDA. And we need to agree to opt into this program so that if we have, they have a pot of money and if we have residents who want to apply for assistance on, it lists, you know, they can apply for mortgage assistance. The only thing that would apply to us would be tax assistance and then utility bill assistance. So we have to be in this program and then when they file, because we're participating in it, then their case can be reviewed and they can be approved if they qualify.
And if they're approved, it would be, the money would come to us, the taxes.
Yes, electronically.
Board, I'll make a motion that we approve or opt in to the M.I.H.A.F. provider participation agreement.
All support. Motion support. Any more discussion? It's a agreement. We got to do roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Motion passes and good work on that, Christine. Help people out. Okay, we have a bunch of amendments. We're creating a separate fund for the San Souci area wastewater treatment plant and/or sewer. And it is Fund 597. And like mentioned before, this is an enterprise fund. The auditor said that until, well, let me back up. We have been awarded through the state budget $2 million. It's in the line item of the state budget to fund this project. It's in the line item of the state budget to fund this project. When October, I, I can.
Phase one, right?
What's that?
Phase one.
Phase one. This is for phase one. October, I have to request the monies and then it would be delivered to us and it would go into this account. So I proposed a budget with accepting a $2 million and basically capital improvement of 1.3 million. It should cover the construction of the plant and engineering. What do I have for engineering here? I don't know, my printer, oh, it's on the back page.
195.
195,000 in engineering. These are just estimates and right now, because I don't have the quotes, $3,000 for computer and software, there's some software we should, we should look at for this, and 2,000 miscellaneous. And I was also proposing, and the auditors said, I cleared with the auditors, we can loan $30,000 from the general fund to this fund. And then when we get our monies, our $2 million from the state, this fund could pay the general fund back. So I want to start going on the engineering projects to make this, because we're, we're looking at doing wetland deline- or, or wetland mitigations and we're, it's pretty intensive as far as engineering. And we got to start doing the permit for the discharge for this plant. So I did put in here that we would pull out 30 grand in the general fund and I show it going back as a receivable, probably, you know, when we get this money in, in October, beginning of November.
What is the 30,000 being used for?
Engineering.
Strictly?
Yeah.
We've already paid for some things that we're going to be reimbursed for, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion for the creation of the 597 sewer fund for Hurson's Island algae plant, for the $30,000 from the general fund and accepting the $2 million from the state of Michigan.
Okay, motion, support. All in favor? Any discussion?
That's a discussion, real quick. What if, does, does the state, when they loan us money for this project?
It's not a loan.
It's not a loan, it's great.
It's, it's awarded to us.
So it will not have strings per se attached?
It just has to be used for this project. And this fund creates an enterprise fund that can only be used for this project.
So you don't see any problem with reimbursing the township that 30 grand once we get paid to 2 billion? There's not a legal hurdle?
Long as it's used for this project.
Which we spent 9,000 already, I think.
Yep, we can reimburse, get reimbursed for that. All right. Everybody understand it?
Yep.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed?
I would do a roll call on that, Arty, because it.
Yeah, we can do a roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next, we have the renewal of the contract for IRA Police Services. And the only thing really changed in this is the numbers that we are charging. For year one, the price goes up over 9% that we're currently charging. And the, the overtime rate is $85 an hour. And year two, it goes up an additional 4%. And I did put a clause in there because they are going to try to go from 12 hours service a day to 24 hours a day. So I put those numbers in what it would be if they so do decide to go to 24-hour protection.
Not quite double.
Not quite double. Our cost, if you could spread out with overheads, a little cheaper.
Make the motion for the approval of the agreement for the police services between the Township of Clay, the Township of IRA, effective first day of September 2023 through
Five, two-year.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion?
Yes, so it's just one officer?
We do 12-hour shifts. We give them right now.
One officer, 12-hour shifts.
Yep.
And when, we have a millage for the police. Is that going to be up soon that we've been getting from our tax dollars? Don't we get 4.5% or something?
We just approved it in August.
Right, but it, was it only a five-year millage? Is that going to be up soon?
It's a special assessment that has been going since 1970.
Oh, okay. So it's never going to end? It's up to 5% or something like that?
Actually, it goes up to 10%.
10 mills.
10 mills.
Oh, goes up to 10 mills? And we approved 4.5, didn't we? Or was it 4.85?
4.85. Did it in August.
I thought that was.
We're kind of in the weeds. We're talking about the IRA contract.
Well, I just didn't want to lose that money and then not be able to have an officer. That's where I was going with that.
Yeah, we're not losing, no.
All right. I thought the taxpayers had to vote on it again. I did, I thought it was a millage, not a special assessment. Okay. And what if they hired the county? Do we know what the difference is with that? Is that why they're hiring us? Because we're cheaper?
No, actually.
Sheriff?
Actually, they had the sheriff. And I'm not sure, it was about nine years ago, they asked us for a quote and we came in at a higher rate than the county was charging them. But they were kind of dissatisfied of the, the service at the time the county was, and they elected to go with us.
Okay, so we're more expensive than.
And since then, they've been increasing coverage and it's been a good relationship. And the whole thing, it actually puts more boots on the ground for us, because they're overhead out. And if we didn't have this contract, our millage rate would have to be more than 4.85.
Okay, right. Right. And we renew that special assessment every year by the board? Is that, because I didn't know that?
Yeah. August, yeah.
When it's budget time, right?
Well, we, we typically do our first meeting in August.
Okay.
Same with garbage and fire, if you recall.
Okay. That's just my questions. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes. Next, we have DPW, Water Department, Gas Pump Software Repair. Lance, you want to come up? I'm getting tired of talking, so you can.
Take it away.
What we're trying to do is upgrade our gas pump to where it'll run on new style software. The software that it's on right now is XP. So there's just a computer that runs just that. And the parts I cannot get for the pump anymore that actually would transmit from the pump to the building in order to download what's on the pump. Parts are no longer available.
This is to monitor the amount of gas that they're using?
It, every truck has a key, plus there's a cemetery key, plus there's a water department key that they use for grass cutting or stuff like that.
I estimate if we can use just a paper log, write down, but the auditors really don't like that.
That's basically so nobody can take and fill their personal vehicle up with gas.
Correct.
Just let everybody be clear.
It, it, it'll give me a complete log, monthly. But the, the part that went bad on it, I cannot, no longer get for it. This is the original pump that we put in when we put the abrupt, above-ground tank in, which I believe is probably around 15 to 17, maybe 20 years old, John?
Yes. This is a budgeted item?
No, it's not.
No, it's not. If, well, I'll, I'll have to see if we can absorb it in our budget. Not, I'm not sure if I'm at yet.
I'll make a motion to approve $1,750 for the gas pump repair line item TDD.
Well, no.
This is a line item.
There's, there's a line item for it.
What is 932? Contingency?
932.
I thought you said it wasn't a budgeted item.
No, but we got.
It's not a budgeted item, but there is a line item for it.
It's a contingency line item.
Line item 590, 591-970.
932.
One above it, Mark.
It's a split between sewer and water. Support.
Switched them around.
Okay, we have motion and support.
Hold on, hold on. What was I looking at?
The gas pump, he says 1750. It's 10,000 for the gas pump software.
No, it's for the generator.
No. 1750.
Oh, that's what it says on here. This gas pump software repair, I got it wrong.
On line, it's 1750. On the, on the new agenda that we have, it's 10,000.
Oh, yeah, they're reversed.
That's total cost?
That's for the gas pump software. Is that what I'm, what we're talking about, right? Right below mine, it says generator additional equipment, 1750.
Yeah, no.
Those numbers are reversed. Transposed.
1750, so I meant my, motion to 10,000.
No.
It is 1750.
It's 1750 for the gas pump.
Air motion was for 1750.
And that's what was in our board?
So what we're looking at in our board back?
I was right.
That's for the total year that you, we paid the support for.
This one's flipped.
Yes.
So let me clarify. We have a motion and support to update the gas pump software at a cost of $1,750. Going to come out of line item 590.
932.
932, yes.
Yes. 590, 932, and 591.
932.
932. Split between water and sewer. And we have support, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, Lance, our generator.
When Ainsworth came out after we had the okay on the last meeting, we found out that the water department building is on 208 voltage and the booster station is on 230 voltage. So the transformer that is in the booster station would need to be replaced in order for it to run off of the 208, which would be, the generator would switch everything then to 208, instead of it being 230.
So basically.
Additional 10 grand.
Ainsworth, who I think is a great company, suggesting we, we have to get the new switch, right?
Yes, a new transformer and then what they're.
A new transformer.
And what they're.
And getting a little bigger generator.
Bigger generator because of the difference in the transformer, yes.
And it's an added cost, which we approved, of about $10,000. But it's still a lot cheaper than our quotes from.
The other two quotes, correct.
Electric and American generator, which were like $78,000. Does everybody understand that?
He was still low bid by 15 grand approximately.
Yes.
Even with that upgrade.
And now the total cost is, what, 59,000?
Yes.
So after both of these, I may have to adjust that budget. I don't know yet.
Adjust it down, right?
What?
Adjust it down because we already approved the higher one? Is that what you're saying?
No, adjust it upward, I mean.
So it's not in the budget either?
Well, the generator was in the budget.
Right, but not, not the 10,000.
That was carried over from two years ago.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so then you're looking for an additional 10,000.
From what was approved at the last board meeting.
Did we go from a, from a 40 to a 60?
We went from a 48 to a 60.
A 48 to a 60?
Which is 5,000 and then the gas line's 5,000, right? So it's not to exceed 10,000, could be less.
I don't, we really don't see the gas line becoming that amount of money either. We're paying $200 for a gas tap as compared to tapping into the line that we have that's existing right now. And they said that's going to be $200 just for the tap. They'll run that in and then there's a section of piping that's going to be roughly maybe 10, 12 feet that's going to have to be put in, which would be hard line. We can probably do that ourself in-house.
Because it says the gas line ballpark of 5,000, so you're thinking it's going to be less.
Yes.
So the 595 is assuming the gas line is $5,000?
Yes.
But you think it won't be?
Correct.
So we could just say not to exceed 10,000?
Yep. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the DPW generator additional equipment in the amount of $10,000 coming from line 590, 970, and 591, 970.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? 10,000, all, roll call, please.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
All right, thanks Lance. Good job.
Did they give you the timeline on that?
It's about a year out.
It's about a year out.
Still.
So this will probably be hitting next year.
As soon as I can get it ordered, it's going to help.
This will probably be hitting next year's budget. So. All right, board member comments. Cindy, how you doing down there?
I'm doing great. So I do have a meeting tomorrow with some local clerks in the area to review and discuss what nine days of early voting is going to look like for February or March, depending on when they decide to hold the presidential primary. The Prop 2 provided nine days of early voting. However, when the voters approved it, it didn't provide any funding for it. So we're trying to figure out how all of us local clerks are going to work this into our budget with as minimal impact as possible. So I will get back with the board when I have more information on that, possibly next meeting. Some guidance is just now starting to funnel down from the state and the county and recommendations, but we're not quite there yet. I want to appreciate, send my appreciation out to the residents that did contact me about the post that was on social media. As Arty had mentioned, human resources is a primary of my additional duties. New employees have paperwork to be completed, benefits to be administered, updated, and[1732.33]
New employees have paperwork to be completed, benefits to be administered, updated, and terminated if need be. General liability, workman's comp, and health benefits need to be quoted by annually if not annually. Workman's comp undergoes a payroll audit every year. There are no other employees hired for human resources. With the help of the township staff, I also track our inventory, due payroll, and accounts payable. The treasurer, Kristi, and I have invested in our education to understand governmental accounting to eliminate the need for a full-time accountant on staff, as well as learning the administering of collective bargaining agreements. None of this is part of the duties of which we are elected for. I personally have a bachelor's degree in general studies. I have a associate's degree in accounting and I have a master's degree in business administration and all the additional classes that I have gone to from working here at the township that pertain to governmental accounting. Additionally, the township team does not have one member that wouldn't say that's not my job. The team as a whole tackles many projects that are out of the realm of their primary duties to consolidate services, keep them in-house, and save our taxpayers when able. We do not contract for lawn services. Our DPW maintains, paints, and services our buildings and our park, as well as the winter snow plowing and salting. Our police department outfits their own cars, cleans their own building and bathrooms, removes their own trash, and internally maintains their own IT in lieu of an IT company. There is much more, however. We would be here all night. The Clay Township staff is incredible and we appreciate every one of them. And our office doors are open for business Monday through Thursday and any resident is welcome to come in and ask how we run things. That's what the office is open for. That's all I got.
Thank you. John? I'm good. You good? Maureen?
Hyda is not going to have a meeting this Saturday. Just want to let everybody know. That's Harson's Island Transportation Authority. It's going to be postponed. And.
We didn't talk about the letter. Want to talk about that at all?
No, not yet. I haven't had time to deal with it.
All right, that's, that's it. We'll.
Mark?
Saying a verb, sorry?
Not really too much. I, I do have, I was in the automotive industry for 45 years. I retired in 2009, since we're doing resumes on the line here. I do have a bachelor's science degree in science and a MBA in technology management, so. My fire department and our police department, I wouldn't trade for the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes, school's back in session. They're going full-time now. So everybody's out and about, including the little ones who really don't pay that much attention. So I think it's upon all of us to pay a little bit more attention when we're driving our vehicles or our dirt bikes or side-by-sides up and down the road. Girls volleyball up at Emily City on Thursday and varsity, our football's got Richmond away this week as well. So feel it coming out and supporting the kids. That's great. And thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. Appreciate the attendance. And it's nice to know people are paying attention in our county, or in our township. Thank you.
Summer tax due date is next week, next Thursday, 9:14. The office will stay open until 6:00 PM as stated on the tax bill. And I would like to reiterate that the information and figures stated in the anonymous posts are inaccurate. I've served this township since 2017. I hope that before the residents in this community jumped to accuse of wrongdoing, that they would first contact anyone in the township office to provide clarification for anything that they are questioning. I may be mocked for this, but please understand that this is not just a job to me. This is and has been my, always been my contribution to serving this community. This is where I live and where I raised my family. You will see most of the members of this board out in the community making contributions on a regular basis. Our natural resources, the services that this township provides, and the kids in our school district are very important to me. As I know they are to many of our residents and I make my best effort to give back every day to the people that I serve in this office, not only through my statutory duties, but also through my additional duties. It is very disheartening to see a handful of people on social media set to slander this board in all of the hard work that we have accomplished over these years. And that's it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing. You know, I think that what a lot of people are upset about is the reporting. You know, when we did budget, I'm not grandstanding because I talked about this when we did budget. I think we need to put that money into where it is, in the salary, not into additional duties. And I understand what you say. I disagree with it, Artie.
Okay, we can agree to disagree.
We agree to disagree.
This is board member comments, please. It's my, my turn to comment.
Well, I get to say.
No, you don't. But go ahead and say it. But go ahead and say it.
No, that's okay.
Go ahead and say it. Go ahead and say it.
No, no, I don't, I, I have had enough disrespect and I'm not going to speak. Every, every single board meeting, I get disrespect and it's very disheartening. I tried to explain what the people are thinking and why I told you that during budget meetings. There's a reason MTA has reports on what you're making for your salary and they're not accurate.
And like I said, MTA applauded us on splitting the salaries up to hold us more accountable to you.
Well, we only have one more year till election day and that's what I said. I'm sure you guys are still going to do your job.
You never know. I've seen it done where it hasn't happened, twice.
Well, it's a way to control the vote too, is, you know, is what I think.
Okay. Oh, by, if anybody thinks I'm, us three are controlling your vote, please let me know.
They haven't given me that $10 yet.
Yeah, right.
I'd like to reiterate on Chris, you know, watch out for the school board or the school buses. And again, a good shout out, a big shout out to the Harson's Island Lions and very successful turkey shoot. It was a great weekend. I was in the boat parade. They had a record amount of boats, 90 boats in the antique boat parade. It was, it was great. Good to see. Want to warn people, there's a lot of scams going on.
Ton of scams.
Lot of scams, scams going on, helping out the burned victims in Hawaii and, and there's just a whole plethora of them. I actually got an email saying that my, from the Geek Squad, saying my script, oh, I automatically renewed my subscription and I needed to click on here to, so I wouldn't have to, the township wouldn't have to pay $415. I clicked on it, I got a virus. So we're reinstalling my computer tomorrow. It's, I mean, it looked legit, shame on me, but it happens. So I just want to warn everybody, if it's too good to be true, it probably is. So be careful.
Other than that, have a great few weeks till we meet again.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Can I say something?
No.
Yes. I'm also, oh, she did. I'm also the treasurer at the Eleganac Lions Club. And Artie just hit on something that has been, we're inundated with, my computer at the Lions Club with all these scams, just like anything else. I mean, it's ridiculous. And the McApey, I guess it is.
McApey.
Yeah, whatever it is, they're hitting you all the time. So you have to be very careful. I always like, I don't pay it, let them, let them bill me.
Can I say one more thing? I just read an article in the Macomb Daily today about the, I don't remember whose Department of Public Works, wiring, sending a wire out and it being, the wire, the emails were hacked. So if it's something out of the ordinary, like if it's the first time, you know, somebody's asking you to do something or it's something out of the ordinary, you do this over and over again and then all of a sudden they want to change, you need to verbally question that kind of thing because they are hacking in and changing one character in email addresses and controlling your emails. That's what happened in that case.
Yep. Okay, anybody else have?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks a lot, everybody. Good meeting.